All right. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February eighth twenty twenty three Operation and Fiscal Fair Committee meeting. My name is Kenneth Harris. I am the chair of this committee and the representative for District Seven. Thank you for joining us today, Ms. Barton. Would you please call the role?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris.
President.
Mrs. LaSalle Fraser.
President.
Dr. Juanita Miller. Mr. David Murray.
Here.
We have Quora.
Very good. Um. So I don't imagine there in front of me. Can we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the what was the date on the last Obafu meeting, Ms. Barton? Yeah, in front of you. Try to pull up my calendar here.
December fourteenth.
December fourth. December fourteen, December. Yep. December fourteenth, twenty twenty two, Obafu meeting. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty two meeting?
I'm move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. All right. Let's move. May I have a motion to accept the agenda for the February eighth, twenty twenty three, Obafu committee meeting?
So, share.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along, um, public comment for today. Ms. Barton, you said we have one registered public comments speaker. Is she in, he or she in the lobby?
We actually have two. At the last meeting, we had one more who uh did join us, and both of them are here. And I will be promoting them. The first one is Amy Olivo.
Very good. Ms. Olivo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Right, the foolish horse.
Great, thank you so much. Um, good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Amy Olivo, and I reside in Chevrolet. I have been a PGCPS parent for twelve years now. I have a junior at Parkdale High School in the International Baccalaureate Program, and a seventh grader at Kettering Middle School in the Spanish Immersion Program. Although I'm here this evening to advocate for something that would not necessarily directly benefit either of them, but would benefit thousands of Prince George's um students. In my former role with the county, um, I worked for the county council. I was lucky enough to serve on the community design team for the new Glen Ridge Area Middle School. During that process, community members advocated for three thousand square feet of community space to be built into the new school. This three thousand square feet is in the final plans and will be built. Crucially, it will include a direct outside entrance, so that those accessing the space do not need to walk through the school building. I'm here today to urge your leadership to ensure that this space is used to build a school-based health clinic at the new Glen Ridge Area Middle School. This school-based health clinic could be run by one of our Prince George's County federally qualified health centers or another healthcare partner in the county. As a group of advocates and I began to work on our advocacy for this school-based health clinic at Glen Ridge Area Middle School, we learned that there are four current school-based wellness clinics in Prince George's County Public High Schools. However, this school year, none of those four, zero of those four school-based wellness centers are operating. Those are located at Bladensburg High School, Oxon Hill High School, Fairmont Heights High School, and Northwestern High School. And again, none of these four existing clinics are operating. Therefore, I'm here this evening to urge your support for board member Shayla Adams Stafford's budget amendment to secure dedicated funding for the development and staffing of school-based health clinics in Prince George's County Public Schools. School-based health clinics work to keep students healthy and learning by providing access to quality healthcare and continuation of care, which are crucial determinants in eliminating the racial racial health gap. School-based clinics align with the Maryland Blueprint for Education, pillar four, which looks to provide more resources that ensure all students are successful, and in particular, wraparound services. These clinics are worth the investment, as they can provide crucial services to students, their families, and possibly even the surrounding communities, including immunization compliance, reduced absences or tardiness, improved academic achievement, increased student learning time, and equity with our surrounding school districts. Ms. Adams Stafford's amendment is a small investment and a tiny fraction of the overall budget, which would move our county forward on two important goals. First, funding and staffing the existing community-based health clinics at Bladensburg, Oxon Hill, Fairmont Heights, and Northwestern. And second, as our county builds new schools, designating the three thousand square feet of community space included in each design to this sort of school-based health clinic could serve not just the students, but to potentially families and members of the community. I thank you in advance for your consideration, and I'm grateful for all of your work on behalf of our students.
Thank you very much.
We have one more uh public commenter. She should be coming into. There she is.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Olivo, and this is uh Ms. Martinez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name is Madeline Martinez, and I am a former English learner student of the state of Maryland, and I'm now completing my master's in public health at Hopkins University. I'm very involved with the community, and I'm here to express uh to ask for your support on Ms. Adams Stafford's uh amendments that she would be introducing tonight that would help our Latino students who are struggling to keep up and to do well in different aspects of our academic achievement results such as math, English, and other items that they need the additional support. And I really think that these amendments that Ms. Adams Stafford is introducing would absolutely provide the support that they need. And as you and I and all of us know, the blueprint calls for districts to provide to implement evidence-based interventions such as uh providing um tutoring services for students that need it. And a lot of our students, unfortunately, the parents, my parents could never help me with my homework when I was in school. They stopped helping me in third grade. So this is something that is essential for our students to have access to hubs where they can go and get the support that they need. In addition to that, one concern that I have is that our students uh represent thirty-six percent of the population in Prince George's County, yet there are only two Latino principals and uh teachers. They're represent about four percent, almost five percent of the teachers in Prince George's County are of Latino descent, and our students are not, do not have someone that they can relate. They can't be who they can see. So this is a good, the other amendment that Ms. Adams Stafford is introducing to have a recruiter that specifically focuses on hiring Latino staff would really help with this aspect and would help our students get connected, get work with professors that can provide the additional support that they need and that also reflect their families and themselves, and so that they see themselves reflected as well. And lastly, I'm here to also ask that we support the amendment for an equity assessment. We need to figure out why our Latino students and our English learning students are falling behind. I look at other states like Texas, whose students are performing as well, if not better, than the native speakers. And I really believe in Maryland, we can do so much better. And if there's anything we need to do to see, to figure out what the root causes are, and to be intentional about our approach would help us tremendously to create a brighter future for everyone, so that everyone, regardless of where they come from, has an opportunity to thrive in our state. And I appreciate everything you all do. This is not easy. You could be at home spending time with your family, and you're here hearing me out today, and thank you for everything you do, and I hope that you will support these amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you for your time. Okay, Ms. Barton, I think that concludes public comment for today. We have no registered public comment for labor partners, so we'll move into uh the budget amendment discussion today. Again, I'll remind our newer board members that the budget amendment process that we're voting on now is for the recommendation to go to the full board. Um, a budget amendment passing here does not mean that it's included in the full resolved.
Okay, thank you.
That is the uh, Dr. Miller, please make sure you mute your mic. I know your audio just connected. Um, and so again, vote on the budget amendment tonight does not mean it goes on to the full budget estate. It's it's a conversation that could, that could mean, hey, I would like more additional information on this budget amendment, and we, I'd like to discuss it with all of my colleagues. Um, for my visiting colleagues, again, as you know, you do not vote during this session, but please feel free to have comments during this time. I see our Chair Mickens Murray here, so I'll start with your amendment because you are here. Um, and Ms. Barton, I don't know if you want to pull it up on the screen for us. I can let you know which one it is. We'll be, be looking at student apprenticeship programs for Mickens Murray if you're in the directory. And the floor is yours, Ms. Murray, Ms. Mickens.
Thank, thank you so much to um you Chair Harris and the uh Obafu Committee for this opportunity. I appreciate um, and I saw where the administration looked at my request, and I see where they already have funds in the, in the uh budget of seventy K to launch a program. I was thinking that this program was already launched, but maybe that's something that I can uh drill down on in a future discussion uh with the IT community. But the reason I, I believe that uh Chromebook apprenticeships are important is because all of our students, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, need the Chromebooks. That's the, that's the device that we use today. My understanding today is that sometimes it can take up to a month for those books to be repaired. I'm also looking at if we could grow our own, if we create a program where we have apprentices to learn how to repair computers, they could become computer technicians if we could build in a certificated program at the end for high school students. Now, you can also, I believe, may be able to start with some uh students in uh middle school, but I'm not sure about that. But having looked at the uh comments from the administration, I'm perfectly willing to accept the launching of this program and look forward to the program growing in the future. Uh ten schools as a launch and centrally located throughout the county, in my opinion, could be extremely beneficial, especially when parents now, I believe, on occasion, schools, I mean, have to send those devices to a place to be repaired. And maybe if there is a centrally located place within uh these ten schools on Saturdays, maybe this process could move along faster. So I know my two minutes is probably up, but I uh Chairman Harris, I would really like to um thank the administration for their comments, and I am, I accept their comments. And if the full board accepts uh their comments for this amendment to move forward, I am willing to work with anybody in the system uh whoever um and uh Mr. Zuckerman identifies to move the process forward. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Very good. So colleagues, I'll now entertain a motion to accept budget amendment for student apprenticeship program. And I can make that motion, actually. I'll make a motion to accept the budget amendment for the student apprenticeship program.
Second.
Good. Any discussion? And I think it's a robust motion. So, so based on Chairman Mickens Murray's comments, it will be accepting the student apprenticeship program budget amendment with the recommendations from Mr. Zuckerman. Okay, got it. Um, and you still second that, Mr. Murray? Okay, uh, any discussion, colleagues? Okay, I'm ready for the vote. Um, all in favor?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I couldn't get to my um mute, mute, I mean, my microphone. Um. I'm not understanding this motion. You're saying to accept something, uh, accept this apprenticeship program once it has gone through Mr. Zuckerman. Has he seen this yet?
No, ma'am. I'll, I'll explain. So this, this motion.
That needs to be uh run by the uh, the um chief um.
Let me, let me provide some clarification. So we submitted our budget amendments. We, we submitted our budget memo on Friday. Um, the administration has uh given us their responses. So each budget amendment uh has received a response from administration. Those are available in an email um that I sent out to board members. I sent a Google Drive. You can, you can look at that, and they have the individual budget amendment as well as the responses. Um, what Chairman Mickens Murray is submitting is that the budget amendment that she has submitted, she will work with Mr. Zuckerman to incorporate his comments, because he's seen it, incorporate his comments into the budget amendment. This budget amendment will go as a recommendation to the full board and will vote on that at the February thirteenth meeting. So a few things, Mrs. Zuckerman's seen it. He's provided recommendations. Chairman Mickens Murray has accepted those recommendations, and now we are voting to give it as a suggestion to the full board.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Any other discussion, colleagues? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Thank you, Ms. Mickens Murray. That amendment passes on recommendations to the full board.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray, you mind going next with your amendment?
Sure thing. Should I share my screen or will it be shared?
Uh, you can, you can draw if you want. It's up to you.
See if I can.
So this will be for budget amendment for reading clinics?
Yeah, is it on screen?
Uh, no. Actually, oh, yeah, it is. It's on screen. Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, so good evening, everyone. This is an amendment um to replicate a program that DC Public Schools um has had for a number of years now. Um, it's a really innovative concept and kind of a national model. Essentially, they have a DC reading clinic where they um bring in DCPS teachers who apply to be in the program. Um, it's like an after-school, kind of like a graduate level practicum um in which these teachers receive um instruction and science of reading and best practices and structured literacy. And then they take what they're learning um in these classes, and they tutor DCPS children um after school, and they get coaching um in terms of their implementation and, and how they're doing with their students. And so it kind of is a twofold benefit in that students are being served um and catching students up who are behind grade level and reading in the early grades, and then teachers um are growing their professional practice. And so what they've seen in the district is that they now have a pipeline of teachers who are really highly trained with hands-on, practical, um, early literacy experience. These teachers are then able to go on to be reading specialists and literacy coaches and vice principals, and they're building a real like pipeline of reading experts in their school system. And so I would like us to, to replicate what they're doing um to start one of our own to serve PGCPS teachers. Um, and this amendment essentially would provide funding for hiring um a coordinator who would kind of start this program um to provide stipends for teachers um for their time after school um to participate in this program as well as to hire um some coaches who will work closely with those teachers as they grow their skill set. Yeah.
Very good. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the budget amendment for uh the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment for reading clinics.
Okay.
Very good. Um, opening the floor for discussion. One question I have, Mr. Murray, is this um is this approach a beta model, as in it'll be um incorporated in a small dosage and then built up over years? So what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think so. So I made the, the request um pretty modest. I think DC has kind of several locations and more staff, and so this is kind of like the bare bones minimum to like get it up and running. And then, you know, after a year, we can kind of evaluate the effectiveness and the outcomes of it and think about whether scaling up makes sense. So yeah, it's, it's kind of a, a smaller pilot to your point.
Very good, colleagues. Other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposition?
Nay.
A one no. Ms. Barton, you got the, just a head nod, fine. So, three, one passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Murray. Okay, uh, Ms. Vice Chair. You ready? Right.
Aye.
All right, um, let's see. So we'll be doing our vice chair's budget amendment next, budget amendment for Director of Diversity.
This is a budget amendment that was um sent in um in support of reinstating a um. Uh, are you gonna put it up for me?
Yeah, she's looking for it.
It's basically to um reinstate a position that um we will focus precisely on, on Latino recruitment. As was stated in um by one of the speakers, we have a thirty-six percent um student population that identifies as, as Latino, and we only have two principals in the whole um county. In addition to that, we have no uh representation of Latin a um executive leadership in Prince George's County Schools. So this position would target specific um strategies to recruit um Latino staff that would have um a understanding of what are the tactics that are needed to not only secure La- Latino staff, but also retain Latino staff. Um, so I am requesting that this budget amendment be um be accepted.
Motion to accept the amendment?
Second. Sorry, I lost my Zoom screen. All right, colleagues, open the floor for discussion.
Um, question, my mic still on?
Yeah, so good.
Uh, question, uh, colleague, um board member of South Asia.
Yes.
How does this impact the current or the uh the current budget in terms of the recruitment of quote, of teachers overall?
Well, this would be a specific targeting of, of Latino teacher. What we have had is a, a lack of success in recruitment for Latino staff in general for Prince George's County. So this would be a very specific and separate uh recruitment effort that would be targeting um not only Latino administrators and teachers, but also Latino staff in general, so that our students can see representation within the district.
I support that. And the reason I'm asking you how this um impacting with the, the general recruitment um effort is that because there is uh sufficient funding for recruitment for quote, a uh classified group, it's uh, I, that's a better term than you. And I'm not understanding why we would need to um ask for additional funding when the, the funding has been adequate. Um. And there has been, and I'm speaking from experience with the system, okay? So I'm not, I mean, I, I support your recommendation in terms of uh the recruitment effort, but I'm just saying, are we asking for more money? Because the, the funding is there. We just have to be more specific.
So we're asking for a dedicated staff person to do the um, the recruitment. And what I'm, uh, what I'm proposing is that data shows that um potential Latino staff needs to identify trusted uh people that they can um connect with. Um, we're having a trust issue in this county when it comes to um recruitment. A lot of our uh Latino teachers are leaving to other counties. So um in addition to just recruitment, this person would be um charged with creating a network of support services to retain the staff, stuff that we're not doing right now in the county.
Well, see, that's a different, that's a whole different approach. I mean, what you were just saying, go out and recruit. We have recruited, we have recruited from that popular, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. And it would not just be, it would, it, it's a whole um program where the um, the person that's in charge of this would also have a retention function, mentoring, and making sure that our um Latino voices get heard within the county.
Okay, because I, I wasn't aware that there was a major problem, but if there's a, if, I won't say problem. If there was an issue, and you talked about trust, and you talked about uh teachers uh leaving, and um I do remember, um, it's been about four years ago when uh we created, the system created positions uh specifically to address the uh Latino population in the language, I'll say the northern part of the region of the district. And um we did get a, 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 a lot of um applicants. Uh, and so what I'm hearing now from you, evidently, there's some data out there that says that these people, these uh uh professionals and professionals that were hired are now leaving the system, and you want to bring in a coordinator that would be providing some kind of uh staff development, et cetera, uh, in order to retain them. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm to understand?
Correct. Um, and what the data shows, I mean, yes, we may have, uh, we have tactics in place, but they're not working clearly when we only have two Latino principals, and we only have four point six of the total staff from PK being identified as Latino.
Okay. Okay, we can talk offline, because I, I can share some other information with you, and I won't prolong this, but um, you know, I'll support your effort.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you, um, Chair Harris. I just wanted to um thank my colleague, um Madeline for introducing this. Um, I've been around long enough to remember when Ms. Nora Morales was here in a similar role. Um, and I think it really spoke um volumes. Um, having her as a member of Dr. Maxwell's cabinet, the level of visibility and prominence she had um throughout the county um really was, was an important thing. I think when I think about schools in my district, um, schools like High Point, you know, we don't have the level of Latino educators that we should have, not even close for the population of students. And so I think anytime we can bring in a position like this that can help us drive a vision, because it's even, I mean, it's more than just teacher recruitment, like we need an entire um pipeline of how we get these individuals into our schools at whatever role and how we're promoting them and elevating them. Because um, you know, students absolutely deserve to see themselves in their educators, and so just wanted to, to voice my support for this amendment.
Thank you.
Hey, colleagues, any other discussion? Okay, calling for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Or any opposed? Seeing none. All right. Uh, the budget amendment for Director of Diversity has passed as a recommendation to the full board. Okay, I see Ms. Adams Stafford is here. All right, Ms. Adams Stafford, are you ready? Just a head nod, sorry. Okay, we'll start with we'll start with the school-based health clinics. And Ms. Barton can pull that up on the screen for you, but you can feel free to get started and it should pull it for you.
Thank you so.
Put yourself back on.
Thank you so much, colleagues, for the opportunity to present uh this uh amendment here today. If you'll just give me one moment, my computer battery is low. Give me one second, sorry. All right. Thank you so much.
Maybe you're speaking again, your mic's muted.
Sorry, it's a toddler dinner, baby time, tablet time, a lot happening, so something about.
That's right, we we get it, we get it.
Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about um school-based health clinics. Um it's not, uh, the school-based health clinics as an effective uh strategy and preventative healthcare services for students in school settings. Um, uh, really, research has shown that S B H Cs can improve access not only for students, but for their families who may have some challenging accessing care outside of school um based due to trans- lack of transportation or even insurance. So um, you know, here in the state of Maryland, oh, we, our counterparts in other counties have, you know, you know, set many school-based health health clinics in their school districts. Um, however, we are behind, we only have four operating uh health-based, health-based clinics right now. And those sites, um, as we understand, um, are are not operating um as to their full capacity at this time. Um, the the use of school-based health centers really can support students uh with truancy, uh, helping them to uh achieve their examination im- immunizations, I'm sorry, um, providing them with mental health counseling on site. Um, and studies have shown that this leads to um so many benefits for students, uh, helping them primarily uh achieve academically, and like I mentioned, reducing absenteeism. Uh, so you know, what I'm uh I'm asking for here with this amendment is to uh really fully staff the clinics that we have um at the schools, um, two of which are in my district. Um, and then hiring a coordinator to coordinate across districts throughout uh P G C P S. Um, and then to expand this number to ten, to bring us on par with our counterparts in other areas of the state. And I I I think that this can only be a positive um outcome for our students and families, especially with uh the great work that we're doing with community schools. Uh, we are already expanding health access uh through those schools, through the Hazel program. Um, and having a school-based health clinics um will only uh continue to support providing access to students that need it the most.
Very good. Um, okay, thank you, colleague. Uh, so I will accept a motion to accept the budget amendment for school-based health clinics as a recommendation to the full board.
Do we have to wait till you make the motion to ask questions?
Yeah, I I I said I'll accept the motion now if someone wants to make the motion.
So moved.
Second. All right, colleagues, discussion.
Please explain to me how this uh if this is an expansion of the Hazel program, which is already in effect that we um that has been introduced to our system and that we will not be duplicating or replicating services that are already in place.
Right, so the Hazel program is a great telehealth program, and it connects students with services. Um, however, there is still a need for physical um support for students um in a variety of health issues, for example, immunizations. Um, you know, we're behind in immunization, in immunizing our population and you know, thinking about how we can use these sites as immunization centers and sites to help students get up to date so that they can, you know, attend school. Um, additionally, providing onsite um mental health support, uh, providing onsite counseling for um community members that may need that support as well, um, families of students um that may not be able to access that through the telehealth system. Uh, additionally, providing um, you know, different types of screenings for sexually transmitted diseases and those types of things you can't get through a telehealth program um necessarily. And so having those things onsite um have proven, the studies have shown that they have been instrumental in uh improving students' academic performance amongst other benefits. So there certainly is a need for in-person support, um, in addition to other telehealth um options like Hazel.
Well, we have issues already trying to get school nurses, and now what I hear you saying is that we propose to open clinics which require uh additional first uh medical or licensed uh personnel when we can't even get the bare minimum. So how do you see us put proposing that in a budget? And um the recruitment of persons for the folk clinics that you're proposing?
Thank you for that question. Um, so one thing to note is that um in a recent uh budget session, uh Dr. Goldson talked about putting out an R S P uh to staff those clinics. Uh, right now, they're supposed to be staffed by the county health department. Um, but there is an opportunity to maybe outsource to other federally recognized health clinics that could assume the responsibility of running these clinics. So that would put um less of a strain on our resources um in terms of human resources.
So you're saying we would do a partnership with the uh county health um health, health department? And um then begin to, well, you just said outsource. So I'm just not understanding why we need to tie in more money in our budget if in fact we're going to partner with the health department for the, for these um, these clinics, for the in-person clinics that you're proposing?
I promise, she starts crying every time I unmute. So um, one, one thing, uh, you're right, this would be a partnership, we still would have to pay them, right? So we still would have to pay local agencies or whoever we find to administer those services to do that work. So you know, we are paying them for the service of, you know, managing and running these clinics.
I, I, I don't see that, but that's my position. I just don't see where we would uh need to incur that expense to get someone to manage. When in fact, if you have a partnership, there is coordination um being provided in the partnership. But that's, that I I can't support that right now. I think the Hazel program, which has uh proven to be successful and uh the fact that we are in a a collaborative relationship with the health department when in fact there is in-person need for clinical services uh through as a uh referral from the Hazel program, then um what you're proposing almost is a a replication of what's already in, what something's already in place.
I disagree. I don't think that this is um a replication of what's already in place. I think that, you know, just just, just the simple fact that, you know, other counties have like seventeen clinics. You know, just imagine the thousands of students that can have access to in-person healthcare. Um, it it's it's really i- an important issue of, you know, equity, you know, to provide, to to provide students with this opportunity um and their families for in-person support. Um, I'd say that the health department, you know, i- i- right now, we're working with them and we're having challenges. So they may not be the best partner, and so that's why it would be good for us to fund this so that we can find um a partner that will be able to support um in the way that we uh that will serve our students that.
Well, we can disagree, agree to be, to disagree, I I disagree, so. I just see that as an unnecessary uh expenditure at this time, especially uh considering how the Hazel program works, so. Uh, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, colleagues. Thank you for your dialogue around this. Any other questions or comments before we, before I call for the vote here? Yep, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I I I support uh Fela Adam Stafford's um proposal, because I know that there is equity gaps when it comes to access um through Hazel Health uh among um indigenous populations. A lot of our families are not accessing Hazel Health because they don't have, there's an um equity divide, and they're, they don't have the technology to to get access to that. So um I support having in-person services.
Very good. All right, colleagues, I'll call for the vote now, all in favor of the budget amendment for school-based health clinics?
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
Yeah. Got that, Ms. Barton? Head nod's fine, okay. All right, moving right along here, Ms. Adam Stafford, I'm gonna give the floor to you again to present your budget amendment for Learning Hub extensions.
Okay, yes, um, so uh for this particular uh, for this particular um okay, I'm sorry, for this particular budget amendment, I am building off of the success of the Acceleration Academies, which the school system has been able to successfully um implement in the summer. Uh, this really, you know, can be restated, and I've talked to some of my colleagues already, it can be termed as high dosage tutoring. And ultimately, what we're doing is we're taking evidence-based practices, we're, we're, you know, leveraging the um, the blueprint as our guide, uh, which really calls for us to provide this in a support plan for students that are failing and giving them um very targeted tutoring support after school. So we're taking the model of the Learning Hubs where we did, you know, targeted um standards, working with specific groups of students over a prolonged period during the summer and expanding that to after school, expanding that to weekends, um, so that we can really capture um the the most amount of students possible and provide them with the most support. Um, we uh we had amazing results um from the Acceleration Academies. We had over fifty percent of students seeing gains in math and English language learning, you know, you're just not seeing that with interventions. And I will say, in districts across the nation, high dosage tutoring is the way that we're supporting students that are suffering from the cold, what they are deeming as a COVID slide. Um, so I I really hope, um, and I also will refer to my colleague, um, Ms. Lysai Fraser, um, she can, you know, provide uh, she and I are both co-sponsoring this, and she can provide some of her experience with high dosage tutoring and its impact.
Thank you. Correct, I I've seen um results, and and we have seen results. I think that um we need to capitalize on what we already saw over the summer and continue to expand this program and provide an opportunity for our students that have huge gaps to lessen that gap. So I I am for the Acceleration Academies.
All right, colleagues, I'll accept a motion to accept the budget amendment of uh Learning Hub extensions for recommendation to the full board.
So moved.
Second. Um, discussion. Doctor's a poor mill, I saw your hand up, I'm not sure if that was by accident, but again, yep, I see your hand up. For yours.
It is, but I'm not on the committee, so I'm not sure whether I can ask questions, that whether I need to wait.
You can ask questions.
Um, I just wanted clarification, um, in terms of the high dose tutoring, because I know when they had the summer program, it was extremely effective. Um, is this in addition to, or or um are we providing funding so that we can have it during another summer?
So this, this, and to my understanding, that we still will have it during, having the Acceleration Academies during the summer. This tutoring would occur throughout the school year so that we can extend the learning from the summer and potentially with some of those same students. Um, you know, in our previous AAC meeting, uh, the school system has done a great job of identifying what we've termed as bubble students or students that are on the cusp of becoming proficient in both English and math, and it would be great to really support those students and getting the help they need to get over that hump of be- becoming proficient. And so this program would take that model of in-person tutoring and extend it throughout the school year and even um into the it's after school and then also possibly on weekends.
Thank you. I I have a follow-up question, but I don't know whether I can ask it now.
Yep, go for it.
Um, is it virtual or is it um face-to-face or both? What you're proposing?
I I'm proposing that this be in-person, um, but uh perhaps my colleague Lysai Fraser, she can talk a little about, a little bit about how other districts are doing their high dosage tutoring. Um, there are lots of different ways that this can be done. But I I sug- I recommend uh in-person.
Okay, all right, thanks. I just wanted clarification as to whether it was so the summer is still in place, and this will just be in addition to to provide tutoring during the school year and hopefully in-person or s- some uh form of tutoring. Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues. Other discussion around this budget amendment? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor for the budget amendment, Learning Hubs extension as a recommendation to the full board. Aye.
Aye.
Let's see now, oh, sorry, um, opposed? Okay. All right, other session passes, no session. All right, board member Adam Stafford, um, budget amendment number six, equity audit.
Okay, so this um budget amendment is specifically uh in, an opportunity for us as a school district um to look at systemic challenges that we face in educational equity. Um, it would allow us to look at um various components of our school district, like hiring, academic achievement, access to special programs um and determine, you know, where are there specifically gaps um for our students and how, giving us recommendations on how we can uh close those gaps. And that is really one of the primary goals of the Board of Education. If you look at our charge, it is to identify systemic gaps um and work towards closing them. And so this equity audit is um very common in school districts uh comparable to us across the nation. And um most recently, our counterpart Montgomery County just completed one. Um, and I think that this will help us as a board determine different priorities based on the results of these audits.
Okay, thank you. Uh colleagues, I'll accept a motion to accept the budget amendment equity audit as a recommendation to the full board.
I got my motion there.
All right, I heard two voices, so someone second for me.
Second.
Okay, thank you, colleagues, uh, opening the floor for discussion around the budget amendment equity audit. And Ms. Barton, you can, you don't have to stop sharing this screen, you can leave it up, that's fine, I can see everyone's hands. Okay, I'm seeing no questions, so I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. All right, board member Adam Stafford, um, for yours again, Budget Amendment Translation Services.
Yes, and actually Chair Murray, if you'd like to um uh talk, uh, is this the uh
She's, she's getting.
Translation. Oh, she's.
Yeah, she's.
Chair Murray, if you'd like to talk about this, feel free to jump in at any point. Um, this budget amendment is is strictly just to bring us in uh compliance with uh the law, uh House Bill eleven forty-four. Um, states that our boards are supposed to provide equal access uh for individuals with English, uh, limited English proficiency. Um, states that our boards are supposed to provide equal access, uh, for individuals with English, uh, limited English proficiency. Um, and so this would require us to translate a lot of our documents currently on board docs and documents going forward, so that everyone has access to, uh, read them. And I, uh, I think that's pretty much it. That's the, the main gist of this amendment. Chair Murray, if you wanted to add anything, sorry.
Talking to me or David? Judy or David?
Chair, Chair Murray. Chair Mickens Murray.
I, I, I support, I support this amendment because I think it's important for all of our, our students and their parents to understand what the options are that we have within our system and all materials must be, uh, readable and for understanding. Now, I do believe that to a degree, something is happening in the system. I don't quite understand what that is and I didn't read it on the, uh, in the amendment that the administration provided to us. So if they're already doing this and they need to help us to see it, because today I don't see it. And, and I'm sure my colleagues don't see it either, but it is a requirement by law and we need to be in compliance. So I suppo- I mean, well, I can't vote, but thank you.
All right, colleagues, I'll accept a motion to accept the Budget Amendment Translation Services as a recommendation to the full board.
So moved.
Second, all right, colleagues, open the floor for discussion. Any discussion? I'll just say that I think it's a, it's a good amendment to put us in, um, compliance with the law. Again, I think this just goes back to everything we're talking about in terms of, um, equity and, and being able to, to best serve our students and our community. So I'm in support of this. And I saw no one else for discussion, so I will call for the vote here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Almost at the end here, everyone, just two more. Board Member Adam Stafford, you, while your main amendments are now done, uh, Mr. Briggs is not here tonight. Would you like to speak briefly? Well, he is, this is co-sponsor, but would you like me to just read through them for everyone? You can do it. Okay, I see you saying something. I'll turn the floor to you again for, uh, budget amendment for teacher shortage.
Yes, and let me just, I'm just gonna pull it up on my screen as well. Actually, uh, could you just make it a little bit larger? I think this, um, thank you. So, uh, this amendment is specifically to speak to the teacher shortage and, uh, it's calling for, if you could scroll down just a little bit, what it's calling for us to, uh, basically develop a position that will focus on forging partnerships with organizations, philanthropic groups, um, companies and just folks that can support us in bringing and attracting top talent to our school district. Um, so this is a position that is, um, it, it exists in other districts that really helps to leverage the best in research and evidence-based practices, uh, to bring, uh, the top talent to a school district, um, especially to high need schools. And so, they would really provide, you know, financial planning, scholarships, uh, sponsorships for district-approved pro- programs, and really focus on thinking about how they can increase school leader diversity, uh, through, um, this particular role. So, you know, this is something that I think, um, can help to put us on par with our, our counterparts, um, to help us to establish strong relationships, uh, and, uh, certainly, uh, leverage the research that's available to, um, attract, uh, teachers to our school system.
All right, colleagues, I will accept the motion to accept the budget amendment for teacher shortage as a recommendation to the full board.
So moved.
Second, all right, colleagues, open the floor for discussion. I do have one, have one question, but it, it involves the, um, budgetary implications. It says there's one FTE and one of the responses from administration was just, uh, are there any financial questions that must be addressed before the amendment could be included in the budget? And that would be ironing out the details of the cost of the, um, FTE uh, for the instructional supervisor. So I just, I just advise that, um, if this budget amendment does work forward, we just work collaboratively with administration to identify whatever that means. That'll be my one comment. It's not even a question. And, uh, Doctor's report, Miller, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Um, this is an area of passion of mine, so I just wanted to ask, um, with this FTE, how does, I was, uh, trying to, um, gain an understanding of how does it enhance what, what is already in place? Because I know that what is already in place is when they go out, they do work with, um, new teachers in the hiring process and they are incentives that are given to new teachers, um, to attract them to our school district. So what would be different with this FTE?
So this FTE will focus specifically on external-facing relationship building. Um, so creating partnerships with organizations like new leaders, new leaders, uh, for new schools, the T- the New Teacher Project, CFA, um, just so many different groups that, you know, specialize in supporting districts and bringing new teachers. Um, I think it's urban teachers. There's, there's just a lot of different organizations out there that we could, you know, sort of have in our, our wheelhouse that we're partnering with. And so I think that this person would manage those relationships, um, and, you know, you know, continue to support, um, just ongoing dialogue and, you know, just basically exposure of our school system, you know, through these networks. Um, I think that the office for recruitment is pretty small based on like my memory of that presentation. And so, you know, having someone whose full-time job is to manage, you know, between philanthropies and organizations and companies and all these different groups that do this type of work, I think that that person, we would really get a lot of, we would really reap the benefits of having someone solely focused on that.
Can I ask a follow-up to this?
I'm sorry, I'm on mute. Yes, sir.
So, um, the only reason I ask, and I'm very passionate about this and I support any effort to, um, address the, the teacher crisis that we're in, is I want to ensure that we're not duplicating efforts. And so we're clear in what the role of this FTE will be, because it was my, and maybe we just need to dig deeper with, um, with, um, the division of human resources. Because I thought there was, i- in their efforts, they do already have, um, mechanisms to establish partnerships with urban teachers, TFA, you know, all of these, um, other organizations that, um, to bring in a new teacher. So, um, just to, for us to be intentional that if this is what we're going for, that this, um, FTE is doing something in addition to what's already happening. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yes, and I actually, I think Board Member, um, Briggs is, yeah, yeah, okay. And, and I just will say that I believe that, that office is, is the, the goal here is to expand that office because the teacher shortage is such a critical issue as you're, you're seeing, um, Dr. Miller, you know, having more people in that office, in someone specifically focused on external-facing relationships can only expand the capacity. I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Jonathan, uh, Chair, Board Member Briggs.
Yeah, um, first, this one. You did. Okay, I want to apologize. For some reason, I didn't seem to get the link to this, um, but I, I've also had some other priorities that I was trying to handle today. So anyway, I just want to apologize to the, to everyone who's here for my lateness. Um, for, is regarding this specific amendment, um, the difference would be really that it would be external-facing in the sense that, like, um, Board Member Adam Stafford said, it's, you know, dealing with philanthropies, it's dealing with partnerships. And, and additional piece that I was thinking about was also there is a request for an equity audit. Um, and as we're thinking about the teacher shortage and kind of the multiple challenges that teachers face, both including pay, um, including kind of, you know, workload priorities that they have, um, and, and other things that they have around professional development opportunities, growth opportunities, um, and, and everything else that the research speaks to. This role was really meant to both support with the research end of it, the external, um, relations end of it, partnership development end of it, um, that I think would be kind of multifaceted. And so it's not necessarily that it would need to be a new role per se if that exists, but I think maybe more so expanding that reach that we currently don't have, um, around the research and using that to develop and guide our thinking regarding the teacher shortage and also developing principles in leadership capacity.
Thank, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Briggs, and, and welcome. Um, does that conclude your time, Doctor Zaporner?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, uh, Chair Mickens Murray.
Hi, uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Harris. One of the things that I'm noticing tonight, which I think is good, is that our colleagues are recognizing that even though we may have these services to date, they need to be expanded in order to lift this system. So it doesn't mean that it's a negative towards what the administration is already doing. What we're recognizing is you need additional resources, administration, in order for us to reach the goals that the blueprint has in place and in order for us to accommodate the accountability, um, from the blueprint. So I'm appreciating all of this conversation. Um, Adam Stafford, I appreciate the, the insight and the wisdom because in every survey that I read, they talked about additional resources. And that was from the school system. That was from within those buildings. So we're not saying to the administration, you are not doing enough. We're saying you're doing the best you can with what you have. But we are recognizing as a body that you need some help and we're trying to open that door so that we can realize that help. So I thank you guys.
Thank you, Chair Mickens Murray. All right, colleagues, last call for discussion around budget amendment for teacher shortage. Okay, hearing none, uh, our my colleagues, please mute your mics if you're not speaking. Uh, and I will now call for the vote. All in favor to support budget amendment item for teacher shortage as a recommendation to the full board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. All right. Um, and last one, thanks everyone again for bearing with us tonight. I know we're just a little over time here. Uh, moving on to our last budget amendment for childcare programs. I'm not sure if Mr. Briggs or Ms. Adam Stafford would like to present, but the floor is yours.
Yeah, again, apologies, I, I wasn't, um, as prepared tonight. So I'm probably going to, uh, skip over some things that I, I would have, if I had been better prepared, um, would have, would have addressed. But I do want to say that I got some outreach from, um, city council members of College Park as well as the principal and a few PTA members at Hollywood Elementary that were suggesting that before care and after-care programs weren't available. Um, they have been available in the past, but they weren't available for, um, some reason this year and the principals have been having challenges. Obviously, the principals receive their own budget that comes down from, uh, the superintendent's office. But this was meant to kind of out, out, you know, thinking about retroactive actions we can take, um, address the fact that they don't have funding for their program that exists in other PGCPs schools. Um, so this would be the equivalent of whatever their program cost is at other schools and, and additional full-time equivalent staff that's, uh, commensurate with the amount that are at other schools that have the same program. So, um, that's the purpose of this specific amendment. And that's the, the priority.
Okay, colleagues, before I open up for discussion, I will accept a motion to accept the budget amendment for, let me say the full name here, for vendor-managed childc- childhood programs at, um, at Hollywood Elementary.
Did you say you moved? You?
No, I need, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Okay, second. All right, colleagues, open the floor up for discussion. So one question for you, Mr. Briggs, just to make sure I'm clear. This is to provide an opportunity to a school within your district that you've seen in either schools within your district or across the entirety of Prince George's County, and it's solely for this individual school?
Yes.
Okay, good to go. Any other questions or dialogues, colleagues? And, and sorry, last thing. Um, so the, so again, the same, the same, uh, comment I had about the FTE for the teacher shortage is, I guess we need to work with administration to determine what is that dollar amount, uh, for the implications, um, to the budget. But again, not a question, just something that I've noted myself. Okay, last call.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that, that information should be readily available, um, because the program is already one that Prince George's County has. So whatever, you know, whatever is happening at other schools will be the, the same, this thing that's happening in Hollywood.
Right. I just know, um, I asso- I assume that in order to get it passed at the full board, we would need a, a range or a dollar amount. I don't know how true that is, but I assume we need a range and one dollar amount. Maybe individual, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. Okay, uh, let me call for the vote. All in favor of the budget amendment of, um, childcare programs at Hollywood Elementary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Briggs, you can't believe.
Yeah, I was actually about to say something.
No, you're good. All right, any, um, any opposed? Okay, very good, colleagues. Well, thank you again to everyone, um, for your time tonight. Uh, we got through that just a little over time, but that concludes our budget amendments for the FY twenty-four budget cycle.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I, I'm, I'm driving and I couldn't get off of mute. Uh, I just wanted to ask a question about the childcare. Are we just asking it for one, uh, facility?
Yeah, this is specifically for one school, um, Hollywood Elementary School in District Two.
And Dr. Miller, to be clear, it's a program that Prince George's County already has for other schools. So it's not like a one-off program. It's just for this school that doesn't have it at this moment in time, but other schools do have it.
It just goes back to the, yeah, it just goes back to the conversation we've been having tonight about expanding opportunities, equity, thing of that nature.
I just couldn't cut in and answer that. I mean, ask because as I said, I'm driving. Uh, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm clear now. I'm clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, colleagues, um, that concludes section three. That includes all of our budget, um, items for tonight. Our next steps will be our February thirteenth meeting, February twenty twenty-three, thirteen twenty-two, twenty-three, which is next Monday. We'll be taking these recommendations from the OBFA Committee, sending them to the, and I'll present them at the full board, just the recommendations of the committee. The full board will then vote independently on or individually on those amendments. We'll have, um, conversation around them and that, and those that pass that will then move on to be incorporated to the budget. Um, and Ms. Howen, her team can talk further about that at, at later meetings. But we'll vote on the full budget at our February twenty-third meeting. I think I got that date right. Was it twenty-six? May, twenty-third, yeah, February twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Be voting, yeah. We're voting on the full budget. And again, so the, uh, community, um, you have the opportunity again to comment at our next work session, work session three, which is February thirteenth. There will be a public hearing following that, that meeting where you are able to speak about either these amendments that you heard and/or the full budget. So please do sign up for that. Um, we do not have any follow-up items from our most recent, for our previous meeting, um, of OBFA. And I just went through our, uh, next steps. So I will now accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Well, very good. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Bye-bye.
See you. Thanks, Ms. Howen. Thank you.